Good evening, everybody. That's better. Welcome to the 2020 Oxford Town Annual Meeting. I am Russell Rowe, your town moderator, and I would like to welcome you to the Roger D. Bacon Gymnasium at Oxford High School. Those of you who may know Roger, he's been with the school department his entire career, and then has done many other things for the town of Oxford. And we all know that behind every successful man is a woman, and in his case, it's his wife, Myrtle. And I might suggest at a future meeting, if we keep meeting in here, that we might also have, besides the Roger D. Bacon Gymnasium, the Myrtle Bacon Air Conditioning System. I think it'd be near unanimous. A few notes before we start. There are rows on the edge of the gymnasium for parties of three or four. There are rows in the center of the gymnasium for parties of one or two. Please respect social distancing. Please take note of the exits located around the room and find the nearest exit in the case of an emergency. Please watch out for anyone who's disabled or elderly to see if they need assistance upon exiting also. Bathrooms are located outside of the gym to the right. Only one person in the bathroom at a time. The floor is marked to line up for the bathrooms. Water is available outside of the gymnasium. If you are a voter, you have been given a light green card to vote. There will be no voice votes at town meeting tonight. We will be using the cards. When it is time to vote, I will call for the vote. If you would like to vote in favor of the article, raise your card when I say "all in favor." If you would like to vote against an article, raise your card when I say "all opposed." Keep your cards held in the air until I indicate you can lower your cards. If you have a question on an article or would like to speak on an article, raise your card and remain seated. A microphone will be walked to you, and the microphone will be held above you to pick up your question or comment. At the conclusion of the meeting, please remain seated. To ensure social distancing, we will be asking folks to exit row by row, beginning in the front. There'll be ushers to indicate it's time to go. Once you leave the gymnasium, please do not linger in the hallways or the parking lot. Please take all materials, such as water bottles and trash, with you as you leave. Trash receptacles are located throughout the gymnasium, as well as your way out of the building. Tonight, as you can see, we had to rearrange things a little bit to bring everybody together and yet keep everybody apart. In the front here, the table closest to me, we have our town clerk, selectman, town manager. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen is on the other podium. That's because Mr. Lamarche will be doing the motions for all of the articles this evening. And right behind the town clerk is our town council in the timeout chair. In the front, we have the rest of the members of the Board of Selectmen. And next past the other podium is Chairman of the Finance Committee. Next to him, Chairman of the Planning Board. We have the School Committee table over there. And in the back, we have the Director of the DPW. Over here, we have Police Chief, Fire Chief, and EMS. School Committee is over there, but we also have the Bay Path School Committee over on this side. Evacuation routes, there are doors on either side of the stage here, and there are also doors to my right in the back. We're going to have our town clerk read the warrants.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Oxford, Annual Town Meeting and Election Warrant, Worcester SS. To either of the constables of the Town of Oxford in the County of Worcester, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet at the Oxford High School, 100 Carbuncle Drive in said Oxford, on Thursday, June 25, 2020, at 7:00 PM, then and there, to act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof at the post office on the Plains, the post office in North Oxford, Memorial Hall, Huguenot Steamer #2, and the post office in Rochdale in said town, seven days at least before the time of said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of said meeting. Given under our hands the 16th day of June 2020, Dennis E. Lamarche, Cheryl A. LeBlanc, Megan E. Troyano, John G. Sad, Selectmen of Oxford. Worcester SS, pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Oxford by posting up attested copies of the same at the post office on the Plains, the post office in North Oxford, Memorial Hall, Huguenot Steamer #2, and the post office in Rochdale, seven days before the date of the meeting as was been directed. Stephen Laffamardo, Constable of Oxford, dated June 17, 2020.
Thank you, Lori. And now, would you all please stand for the National Anthem? Flag is above me in the middle here. I'm going to ask one of our longtime selectmen, Selectman John Sad, who is a veteran, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. We just want to have a quick moment of silence for any town residents or town employees who have passed away since our last meeting. And in particular, I just wanted to mention the recent death of Alfonso Al Esposito, who spent many years of service to our community, especially in our school department. Thank you very much. Please be seated. John, I mentioned that you were a veteran as far as military service, but also you're a veteran selectman. How many years have you served?
Forty.
Forty.
Thank you for your service. All right. As I mentioned before, if you want to be recognized, just hold up your green card. And we'll also be using the green cards for voting this evening. If you speak or ask a question or make a comment and want to move the question, you cannot do it if you've already spoken. Basically, you want to make sure that everyone treats everyone with respect as neighbors. And it's fine to disagree, but we want to make sure that when you're talking about a particular article, you're talking about the article and not a particular person. So make your comments about the article, not an individual. As you came in, you should have received the town meeting warrant book. So we'll be following along in that. And we're going to start with Article 1, to hear any reports of any town officers or committees. Are there any reports this evening?
Chairman of the Finance. Chairman of the Finance would like to address the audience.
Okay. I'm going to hear from Mr. John Mule, the Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Tonight, I'd like to start the meeting by telling you where we are and how we got to here.
We need the mic on for the Finance Committee chair.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're going to put forth a level-funded, balanced budget in an attempt to be proactive in addressing our future of our community in these challenging times. Our community continues to be an aging one, with one out of four of our population now over the age of 65s. Our roads and our infrastructure continue to decline, as our student population does as well. The focus has been on a balanced approach to the future of the community in maintaining a level of our services and the integrity of our infrastructure. The budget is a level-funded budget of $40,760,516. Each department head, along with the town manager, has reduced their operating budget by $615,696. And the school committee has reduced theirs by $511,389,000, for a total reduction of $1,127,084, which is just $48,892 over the fiscal 2020 budget. In light of our aging infrastructure, our capital committee entertained requests of We prioritized and approved $2,1,840, leaving unfunded $4,836,934. In an effort to address the voices of the community with regard to our current road conditions, our town manager has modeled a balanced approach, funding over the next 15 years so that the impact that the taxpayers is a minimum. It allows for previous borrowings to offset future tax increases over that 15-year period as they are retired. The borrowings will be spread over that 15-year period as roadwork starts and finishes. It can't be done all at once, and no one would want it to be done all at once because it would create havoc in our community. So this is a futuristic budget. These are uncharted times. We've been very prudent in taking proactive action to make sure that our budget matches the unknown times that we're facing. There may be changes going forward depending on what the state does. The town manager has already applied for grants, so we're first in line, and we're trying to get the funding to offset any costs that we've incurred addressing this virus. So we're trying to be as prudent as we can while trying to do something with the infrastructure and addressing the voices of the community that we've heard over past meetings as far as roads go, as far as buildings go, ergo, the Woodbridge Street School, the demise of that building. So we're trying to be very proactive and very prudent. So that's how we got to these numbers. Everybody's participated. Department heads have all gone over their budgets and scrutinized it, as we have. We've had over 15 meetings over the past seven months, and we'll continue to have meetings as needed. So I wanted to set the tone for tonight's meeting. So that's the Finance Committee's report and how we got to these numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Are there any other reports this evening? Okay. I just wanted to mention, I wanted to thank any officials, employees, or volunteers involved in the beautiful potted plants that sprung up all over town. I think the town looks wonderful, and thanks to everybody that's involved. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to rescind the X borrowing authorization.
You're right.
I'm looking for X in my notes. The X borrowing authorization approved by the vote taken under Article 10 of the X Town Meeting for the purpose of X or Act Thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move to rescind the $3,300,000 borrowing authorization approved by the vote taken under Article 19 of the May 4, 2011 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of the Oxford Middle School renovation project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee approves.
The Finance Committee does recommend. Are there any questions or comments on Article 2? Can we get a mic over to Mr. Hammond?
It's 2020, and that was taken back in 2011? Why is it taking nine years to clear this up?
Go ahead.
This was approved in 2011. You were just wondering why it took nine years to, why are we doing it tonight?
Sure. I've only been here for a little under two years, and one of the things, as town manager, I have strived is to look at all of our revenues and also our indebtedness. And perhaps it was just left on the books in case there were additional borrowings that needed to be done related to that repair. I don't know I wasn't here, but $3.3 million as a borrowing authorization that's just sitting on the books doesn't help our bond rating and actually should come off the books at the point at which it's finished. So I don't see any reason to keep it on the books, and that's why we're taking it off, because I would like to enhance our bond ratings, and I would like to make sure that we're not carrying debt authorization that is no longer necessary to that purpose.
So basically, we have a new town manager, and she's going through and doing housekeeping. When we go to borrow more money, it looks like that's money that we can borrow, so we want to take that off the books. And we can't do that without town meeting authorization. Any other questions on Article 2? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 2, raise your green pamphlets. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your green pamphlets. Article 2 passes unanimously. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to meet the state's share of the costs for town roadway maintenance and repair, such amount to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as State Highway Aid, Fiscal Year 2021, Chapter 9 Apportionment or Act Thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $510,422 be appropriated from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Highway Aid, Fiscal Year 2021, Chapter 90, Apportionment, account to meet the state's share of the cost for town road maintenance and repair, such amount to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee does recommend.
The Finance Committee does recommend. Are there any questions or comments on Article 3? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 3, raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your green cards. Article 3 passes unanimously. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the unexpended balance of the appropriations made by the vote taken under the following articles of the following annual meetings for the following purposes. We have Article 11 on May 6, 2015, which was a one-ton dump truck for the DPW. We have Article 8 from May 3, 2017, which was a DPW fleet replacement program. We have Article 13 from May 2, 2018, backhoe loader replace #45. And finally, we have Article 10 from May 1, 2019, Oxford High School Track Resurfacing. The total of those accounts are $47,921.30. Such amount, excuse me, such total amount to be used for the purchase of a lawnmower, Oxford High School Cemetery access and monument cleaning for the Department of Public Works or Act Thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 4 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the School Committee? Excuse me, of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
I figured since the school was mentioned, and then we'd asked them to. They do recommend. Any questions or comments on Article 4? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 4, raise your green. Oh, did somebody have her? I'm sorry, I didn't see. Oh, way in the back, okay.
Why do we need in an emergency access road between the high school and North Cemetery?
Question of the need for an emergency access.
Thank you for that question. The majority of this, since it's a transfer, is not coming out of the operational budget. One of the things that has been identified by our public safety officials relates to if there is an emergency at the school, whether it's a fire or a police emergency, that the fact that there is one entrance and exit is not necessarily very helpful. And so we have been talking about needing to actually try to conform to improve the safety standards that would be related to our student population, and the best alternative was to create this access road as an alternative to the entrance and exit for emergency purposes through the cemetery. So that's one of them. The other thing is a grant that we received after applying historically to refurbish all our veterans monuments. It's the first time we've applied, and we were successful, and there is a match that relates to that. And we have one particular war memorial that is really very severely degraded. And so this does not require new money being borrowed or being authorized in the budget. It's simply a transfer. But it's a well-worth transfer, one enhancing safety and the other improving the looks of our veterans monuments, which have never been cleaned or rehabilitated.
Hang on until we have a microphone there, please. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, are we using any graveyard placements for this emergency access road?
Was the question, are we using?
We couldn't hear that clearly.
No.
Are we taking away from any burial spots?
Will any burial spots be affected? Is that the question?
I would highly suggest that none of us would want to do that, so the answer would be no. We're not taking away from plots. They would be in areas where there are no plots, and obviously, our public safety has reviewed where that would make most sense, and it would wind up being more contiguous with the existing roads that already go through the cemetery, so that you could go in and out if there should be an emergency.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article 4? I don't see any green cards. So all those in favor of Article 4, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Article 4 passes unanimously. Article 5, to see if the town will accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 60, Section 15B, authorizing the town to establish a tax titled collection revolving fund for the treasurer collector to be known as the Tax Title Collection Revolving Fund, and to vote pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, to establish a new revolving fund to be known as the Board of Health Revolving Fund, and further, to amend the Oxford General Bylaws, Chapter 73, revolving funds by inserting two new rows at the end of the table and authorizing revolving funds as follows. And you should be able to see that in your documents. Or Act Thereon, sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 5 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend Article 5. If anybody has a question or comment, please raise your green card. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 5, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your green card. Article 5 passes. Article 6, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, to establish the fiscal year 2021 spending limits for each revolving fund established in the Oxford General Bylaws, Chapter 73, revolving funds as follows. For the wiring inspector fees, $100,000. Plumbing inspector fees, $60,000. Gas inspector fees, $20,000. Building inspector fees, $100,000. Sealer of weights and measures, $10,000. Utilities, $400,000. Animal control, $50,000. Board of Health, $60,000. Tax title collection, $50,000. Or Act Thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 6 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on Article 6? Please hold up your green card. Sir? We'll bring a mic over to you. So everybody can hear.
Just an explanation. The first one you read off was that $100,000 for the electrical, I think?
Did you say wiring inspector?
Yeah, wiring, okay. Is that money that the wiring inspector is going to spend or money that the wiring inspector is expected to collect?
These are spending limits.
So you, I'm sorry?
Can you say that again?
These are spending limits. This is just something-
The wiring inspector would be spending $100,000 for inspections.
That's the limit. The limit.
Well, he would be limited to $100,000.
That's the limit that can be spent or the balance within the account.
Okay. Now, how much do you expect to bring in from wiring inspections?
The current balance in the account is only $88,000. I don't know, I don't have in front of me what is brought in annually, but if there's only $88,000, I don't anticipate that it's $100,000 to be brought in.
Okay, now, what type of things is this money spent on for the wiring inspector?
This is mostly for inspections.
The question was- The question was, what else can the money be spent for?
No, no, I mean, you're doing a wiring inspection, I'm thinking you're drawing a fee. Now, what, why do we need a hundred thousand dollars for a wiring inspector other than his salary? What other things are you paying for?
Likely, we won't need a hundred thousand dollars. But this is just paying, this is just paying for the inspection to the inspector. But we probably will not spend a hundred thousand. This is just a spending limit, as voted every year.
Okay, thank you for your answer.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Are you all set, sir? Okay. All right. I don't see any of the green cards, so we will call for a vote on Article Six. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, excuse me, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article Six, please raise your cards. Article Six passes. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money from the Celebration Stabilization Fund for fiscal year 2021, or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from the unexpected balance of the appropriation made by the vote taken under Article Eight of the October fifth, 2016, special town meeting, for the Founder's Day Celebration Account, the sum of fifteen thousand dollars and appropriated to the Celebration Stabilization Fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend. I forgot to mention early on, if you do have a question, if you could state your name and street number, just so the town clerk can have it for her records. Does anybody have a question or comment on Article Seven? Please raise your green card. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Seven, raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your green card. Article Seven passes. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from free cash, a sum of money to the Compensated Absence Fund. Any vote under this article to take effect upon adoption, or act thereon? This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of fifty thousand dollars be transferred from free cash and be appropriated to compensate Absence Fund. Any vote under this article to take effect forthwith upon its adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend Article Eight. Anyone who has a question or comment on Article Eight? Raise your green card, we'll get a microphone right over here. Are there any others while we're getting the mic over there?
What exactly are we paying for with this, like, unused vacation time and sick time? I mean, we got into this problem when one of the town managers before us left, that we had to pony up twenty or thirty thousand dollars because nobody put the money aside. But now, it sounds like we're taking more tax money from, out of, from budgeted, previously budgeted money for salaries, and we're just adding another, another source of income for people to-
Thank you for your question. I'm Katie McKenna, the Finance Director.
A little louder, Katie.
Thank you for your question. I'm Katie McKenna, the Finance Director. And you're partially correct that this is for folks that are retiring and they have some payouts coming to them, usually in vacation time, or not personal time, vacation time. And last year, there were several police officers that retired, and we had a treasurer-collector and assistant treasurer-collector. So these are generally unanticipated. Sometimes, like last year, we anticipated it. So we don't have any anticipated right now. This is kind of a savings account for that purpose.
Aren't you supposed to put that money aside each year that the person doesn't use their vacation time or their sick days? Again, this is how we got into trouble with one of the former town managers. No one ever put money from previous years aside to pay these bills. I mean, if someone works for me and they have a week's vacation, it's due, due them upon retirement. I'm supposed to have put the money aside from whatever year they didn't take their vacation? I mean, the way you're doing it now, you're just adding another tax-
Jen, I can do this.
-onto us. Unless there's something I'm not understanding.
Mr. Moderator, I think I can answer this. So, we are obligated, under the Department of Labor standards, to actually pay people time that is earned and compensable upon a retirement or departure on good standing, meaning they're not necessarily fired. So when people retire, the only thing that we're really obliged to have to compensate that individual for, we do not pay out sick time, we do not pay out personal time, we pay only vacation time. We do have a policy that we implemented this year that only allows ten days of vacation to be taken over from a given year unless it's explicitly approved by the town manager. This is in an effort to make sure we don't have very large unfunded liabilities when someone wants to retire or leave their job unannounced. We don't always have the luxury of knowing this. So the Massachusetts Legislature has enabled communities to adopt a compensated absence fund, to approve it. This town does have one of those set up. It actually helps us in terms of being rated by the Department of Revenue for planning in advance. It's very similar to a capital stabilization fund, or any other fund that is anticipating that if you have an unscheduled or unanticipated retirement, you will be able to be ready to handle even if it's two or three weeks that, you know, didn't come out of the person's pay because they're no longer working, but they're entitled to when they leave. This is just purely things we have to conform to with the division of labor standards. So there's nothing nefarious with this. It's actually a really good thing to have even a small amount of money put aside, because when we settle this budget and you have it in operating for staff, there's only a limited amount that looks at insurance costs, not what people have in terms of vacation costs when they leave the job.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article Eight? I don't see any other green cards. So all those in favor of Article Eight, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article Eight, please raise your green cards. And Article Eight does pass. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to the Stabilization Fund for fiscal year 2021, or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following sums be transferred from and to the accounts indicated as follows. From free cash, two hundred fifty thousand. High School Stabilization Account Fund, nine thirty-one, eleven thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. From the Sped Stabilization Account Fund, nine thirty-eight, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents, for a total of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-nine cents. And send it to the Stabilization Fund for the fiscal year 2021, in a total amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend Article Nine. If anyone has a question or comment, please raise your green card. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Nine, please raise your green card. Thank you. All those opposed to Article Nine, please raise your green card. Article Nine passes unanimously. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to the Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB, Liability Trust Fund for fiscal year 2021, or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Town Manager, I move that the sum of fifty-five thousand dollars be raised by taxation, and a sum of nine hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents be transferred from the Retirement Trust Fund and appropriated for the Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is OPEB, Liability Trust Fund for the fiscal year 2021.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend Article Ten. Please raise your green card if you have a question or comment on Article Ten. Mary? Just to remind her name and street when you start. Okay, could I have your name and street? Okay.
What are you talking about? It's very vague here, what you're saying.
I believe it's something to do with areas.
I think the question was that it was vague. Is that what the question is?
She doesn't understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. So, so the OPEB, post-employee retirement, post-employee benefits are something that every municipality has to contend with. It basically is trying to pre-plan for people's pensions for as long as, not, once they leave employment, for as long as they live. And what we've seen around the nation is that as more and more employees come through the door and people are living longer, that pension liability traditionally continues to be something that a community has to be able to fund and prepare for, our portion that the town pays towards those retirement things. So, many investments that take place on the market fluctuate up and down, and what happens is oftentimes, communities get behind in being able to cover all of their retirees. So this is another very good proactive financial management tool that we implemented this year, that there should be a steady infusion, not millions of dollars all at once, but a steady infusion. Our auditors have given us high marks for implementing an actual OPEB fund, and that is actually doing very well. And that if we give an annual amount, then that also puts us on a trajectory for getting high marks from our auditors and our bonding authorization rating agencies. So, it's multiple purpose, but it's really just about having a schedule. This year, it's fifty-five thousand. We're doing small amounts, and it's normal to do this so that you will be able to keep up over time with every retiree that's still alive that we have a pension obligation for.
I understand that you're on the public pension and everything, but may I ask you why you got behind and why we have to fork it out now?
Every municipality gets, excuse me, Mr. Moderator, I don't, through you to the audience, which I hope we can continue to do. Every municipality has to plan for changes in costs related to pensions. Even today's dollars aren't necessarily the same as they will be ten years from now. And so, costs go up related to those kinds of costs that we use to support a retiree. So unlike some places, which are private entities, in which retirees are only able to collect social security and/or get earnings from the stock market or their individual retirement accounts, public municipalities have pensions in which all the members contribute while they're employees. It's not, it's not a giveaway. Employees contribute into that, the town also contributes into that. And then over time, once they retire, that obligation goes to the retiree, and you hope that it can sustain them through the life of their retirement. But like anything, cost of living adjustments, costs of health care, costs of being able to live on a pension, get moderately adjusted, and you have to make sure that you can take care of those retirees later on in life.
All right. We have a question in the back over here? What time? No.
No.
They've had a chance, let's give somebody else a chance. No, thank you for asking.
Martin Shaw, Sixth Douglas Road. Is this an additional tax that's not included in the budget correctly?
Is it an additional tax, did he ask?
Could you say it again?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Sorry. Is this included in the budget as a, or is this going to be outside the budget as a separate tax, additional fifty-five thousand dollars raised in taxation?
This has been budgeted within the levy capacity, so, but it is a taxation article. It's within, it's within the budget.
Did I hear correctly? It's within this budget?
It's not an additional tax. It's part of an appropriation that we're making with the overall budget, which is highly recommended by the IRS and the Department of Revenue that we do it this way.
But it's still an additional, still an additional line, I have two, it's in, on top of the forty million, some odd dollars, Finance Chair has spoken about. This is an additional fifty-five thousand.
You are correct.
Okay. Thank you. It's in the fifty, it's in the budget.
Mr. Moderator? If you look to the budget, the bottom line of the budget, you'll see that there is an OPEB stabilization for fifty-five thousand, which is in the total of the forty million, seven hundred sixty thousand, five sixteen, that I mentioned. So it's part of the forty million dollar budget. Now, you want to view this as an IRA. Every year, you can put six thousand dollars of your money into an IRA account. Basically, what we've done, we've put together a schedule that covers fifteen years. So for the next fifteen years, you're going to see this article, okay? We're putting together fifty-five thousand dollars every year like you would put six thousand every year into an IRA, which is our share, the employee pays their share, and it grows in time, and we all hope and pray that their share and our share comes out evenly for them because it covers themselves and their spouse. Okay? So we want to make sure that, right now, there's about four million, and it's growing and earning interest, and we're going to keep adding to it like you would add to your IRA every year. And we hope and pray that their share and our share at the end of their retirement and their demise, and their spouse's demise, that we've had enough money to carry into the grave. So that's what we're trying to do. We're doing this prudently. Some towns have ignored this, and they're going to be looking at astronomical amounts of money that they're going to have to come up with all at one time. We're trying to be proactive, like I said in the beginning, and have a balanced approach. So we put together a schedule that the, that the, we've approved as a board, and that our auditors, our state auditors have approved, that we're being very fiscally responsible in doing this in moderate steps. But it is part of the forty million. If you go all the way down to the bottom under OPEB funding, you'll see the fifty-five. Thank you.
That was our chairman of our Finance Committee.
Are we paying for anyone's dental insurance? I remember several years ago, there was quite a discussion about how we were not going to be paying for anyone's dental insurance.
Dental insurance is one hundred percent paid by the employee.
So, the town is sponsoring a dental insurance plan that's fully paid for by the employee?
Yes.
All right. So-
I heard yes.
Several years ago, quite a discussion that that wasn't even going to be entertained. But anyway, that's water over the dam at this point. Now, are we paying for life insurance for anyone?
Yes. We do pay a portion of life insurance. It's a very small portion.
Five thousand?
I look at these salaries, and you people can't afford your own- I look at these salaries, and you people can't afford your own life insurance policy? I mean...
That's, that's outside of the, yeah, thank you. All right. I don't see any other green cards, so on Article 10, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your green cards. All those opposed to Article 10, please raise your green cards. Article 10 passes. Article 11, to determine what sums of money the town will raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, which is fiscal year 2021, or act thereon. This is sponsored by the Finance Committee. I will be reading the department totals, and I'll, I'll help you follow along in the town meeting warrant book that you received. We're going to start on page 34, so I'll give you a second to flip to page 34. Now, the way this works, we've done this for many years, to save time, we're going to read the total for the budget of each department. If you have a question or a comment about that particular department or that particular budget, please yell out "hold," and we will discuss that. We'll go back and discuss that. Any of these that we don't, no one says "hold," we're going to do one big vote just to get those all out of the way, and then we'll go back to anything that's held. Some of these, just so you know, will automatically be held because we have to do a special transfer. So the selectmen or the town manager will yell "hold" on anything that we have to do special transfers, and we need to hear from you if you have any questions. Just yell "hold," and we will make a note about it. So we are going to start on page 35, about halfway down. It says moderator total, $1,800. Selectmen, towards the top of page 35, $39,100. Town manager, bottom of page 35, $386,721. I'm on page 36. No. That is the total budget. I'll give you, I'll give you a second to look. It's in the middle of page 35, it says town manager, and everything listed down to town manager total on the bottom of the page is included. So no, it's not just salaries, it's the entire budget for that office. Okay. Once again, at the top of page 36, it says Finance Committee. So you can see it's for the salary for the clerk, advertising, and there's a reserve, most of it is a reserve fund. If any particular department has an emergency, they can go to the Finance Committee and request part of that from the budget. Next, on about halfway down page 36 is the Finance Department, and their total is about halfway down page 38. So go to page 38. It says Finance Department total, $1,093,063. Next, halfway down page 38, Legal Services, the total is $85,000. Underneath that, Human Resources, Human Resources Personnel Board. Towards the top of page 39, their total is $111,069. Halfway down page 39, Town Clerk, total is $194,586. Next is Land Management. On page 40, about halfway down, it says $145,283. There is a hold on that. Halfway down page 40, Memorial Hall, $87,018 is the total. Page 41 is the Police Department. Starts our Public Safety section. The total is on about halfway down page 42. It says Police total, $2,572, excuse me, $2,572,680. Next is EMS Fire. Their total is at the top of page 44. Their total is $1,037,30. And there is a hold on that. Next is Emergency Operations Center. The EOC total is $4,389. Next is Animal Control. About halfway down page 45, Animal Control total is $78,750. Next is Department of Public Works. That total can be found on the bottom of page 48. I'll give you a second to flip pages. Department of Public Works total is $3,066,980. We have a hold. Thank you. Top of page 49, Municipal Utilities. The total is $405,000. Next is Council on Aging. That total is found on halfway through page 50, 5-0. Council on Aging total is $142,028. There is a hold on that. Veteran Services, bottom of page 50, $208,49. Page 51 starts Culture and Recreation. The Library, total is on the bottom of page 51. It is $405,198. The top of page 52 is Community Center. Halfway down the page, Community Center total is $265,508. At the bottom of page 52 is Historical Commission. Their total is $1,264. Top of page 53 is Celebrations. Halfway down, the Celebrations total is $9,000. Next is Debt Financing. Towards the bottom of page 53, it says $1,376,493. Next is Retirement and Insurance. The total is on the top of page 54. That is $7,401,79, excuse me, $7,401, try that again, $7,401,090. Yes? Oh, they're saying "hold." Are you saying "hold"? Would I have, are you saying? Hold? I'd say "hold," I'll get to say it the right way one of these times. No, it's okay. Next on page 54 is Sewer Enterprise. That total is about halfway down page 55. The Sewer Enterprise total is actually zero. And there is a hold on that. What next is Water Enterprise. Total is also zero. There's, there is a hold on that. Towards the bottom of page 55 is Education. The School Department total is $18,066,975. The Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School District, which is better known as Bay Path, their total is $1,418,052. And that brings us to the end of the budget. All right, so we're going to vote on all of the totals that nobody said "hold," just to officially get those out of the way, and then we'll go back line by line, department by department, for the hold items.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the amounts of money set forth in the Finance Committee's recommendation column of the printed budget, except for the amounts of money for those items which have been held for discussion, be raised by taxation and appropriated for the several purposes therein itemized. Each item marked with an asterisk being considered a separate appropriation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend. All those in favor of the budget, Article 11, except for those totals that were held, please hold up your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article 11, please hold up your green cards, your green cards. Article 11 items pass unanimously. And now we go back to page 34, where the budget begins, and the first item held was...
Mr. Manager, Mr. Moderator, under Land Management on page 40, I moved that the sum of $145,283 be raised by taxation and $100,000 be transferred from the Board of Health Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account and $140,000 be transferred from the Building Inspector Revolving Account, and that the total amount of $385,283 be appropriated for the fiscal year 21 land management budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend. So again, we're on page 40, about halfway down. It's $145,283. I see a green card in the back.
I'm all for raises, but can you complain to me why the Board of Health Inspector is getting almost a 70% raise toward your budget?
Did he say, was this related to the Board of Health? I couldn't hear. Oh, you were asking whether there was a raise to the Board of Health Inspector? No.
It's a 70% raise.
It's not a raise in terms of an individual person. What we've done strategically, if you, everyone realizes this is not a normal town meeting. We've encountered a major pandemic. We have always outsourced our public health and border health services. That has made it very disjointed, and as I approached handling this pandemic with a background in public health, one of the things we recognized, no different than having a police chief, no different than having a DPW director or a town manager, you need to have people who are familiar with our town that are not open to contractual service provision so that we can have a coordinated effort. So what you're seeing is the entire budget is going up because we truly need a Director of Public Health that oversees the inspection of our restaurants, that oversees the public health nursing services, that oversees our response to Title V. Everything would be considered under one umbrella. It's actually there to hopefully save money because what's not always provided for is the unexpected or unanticipated things that we have to address that we don't have the money in the budget for, and we don't have the professional person to do that. That's not to say that we don't have a contracted Board of Health agent and a food inspector, but this is to put it all under one person. So in order to do that, it's coming out as a look, as an increase in that budget area, and it is, but it is for consolidation of all of those contracts for a person that can directly work with the town manager in all the other departments as an on-premise employee that understands the needs of the town better. It's a strategic initiative that we have, no different than the Planning Department, that we have been needing to have for a long time, and it's very unusual not to have an individual with a background to handle those very complex issues that come up under Border Health and Public Health Services. But thank you for that question.
Any other questions, any other green cards? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the land management budget, please hold up your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please hold up your green cards. And the land management budget passes. Next, we move on to the top of page 44, EMS Fire total.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the sum of $1,037,30 be raised by taxation and $760,000 be transferred from the Ambulance Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account, and that the total amount of $1,797,30 be appropriated for the fiscal year 21 EMS Fire budget.
Second.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on the EMS Fire budget? I see no green cards, so all those in favor of the EMS Fire budget, hold up your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please hold up your green cards. The EMS Fire budget passes. Moving along. At the bottom of page 48, Department of Public Works total.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the sum of $3,066,980 be appropriated for the Department of Public Works.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend. Questions or comments? Please hold up your green cards.
Was there any, we had such a mild winter last year, was there any money left over?
You say the overtime budget?
Well, I see the overtime budget for this year, but was there any money left in the highway department's funds from last year? We had such a mild winter.
Is he asking if there was money left in the overtime account? Is that what he asked?
Well, in the budget in general.
Anything that's left over from a previous year would actually go eventually to our free cash determination, so it wouldn't be included in this particular budget. But one of the things that we had looked at is the fact that the overtime itself is reflective on how, how difficult the weather is and what are the other factors that might relate to the major infrastructure jobs that we have that are time-sensitive and need to be done. I know our DPW Director, you know, tries very, very hard, and I watch very carefully our overtime budget. And so this is reflective of the needs, not reflective of a wish list. So it's better to be proactively planning for overtime because it's going to happen. And this is a way that we build that into the budget, but it doesn't mean that it always gets expended every penny. It's just in case we get to that point where we need to have that overtime, it's there. And if it doesn't get used, it gets put back into free cash. If you look in your books, you will see that this management team in particular, on page, on page thirty-two, we've increased free cash numbers to the tune of more than doubling since I've come in. And that's one-time money that actually gets reverted back to the town to be able to use both in its budget or in its capital needs. And so when you go up over a million dollars, that's reflective of money that we're not using in the budget because we're very conservative, and it gets turned back into the coffers of the town for another consideration through another budget cycle or capital planning cycle. And so that actually is very good, and it shows that we're being conservative and we're, we're chasing down that money that we're not using and putting it back for an opportunity to be considered by the taxpayers.
The second part of my question. Does the town still receive a, I looked in the DPW's budget here, and I didn't see it anyway. Does the town still receive a percentage from the transfer station up on Route fifty-six for tipping fee?
Yes. But it's a separate, it's a separate fund, it's kept in a separate area.
The Finance Director is right, it's a separate fund and it's not in this budget because it is a separate fund.
Can you tell me how much is currently in that fund?
Yes. There, right now, the balance is two hundred ten thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars, but we will be appropriating from that in some of the capital projects.
Thank you. Any other green cards?
All right, as a financial person... I'm sorry. As a financial person, you're looking at requested and recommended. What about actual? What about last year?
It's in there. That is there. The first two columns, your fiscal nineteen actual, which is the last completed year. That's the very first column.
Okay.
Thank you.
As a financial person, is that, that's good? All right. All those in favor of the Department of Public Works Budget, please hold up your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please hold up your green cards. The Department of Public Works Budget passes. Moving along. On the top of page fifty, about halfway down, it says Council on Aging Total.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the sum of one hundred forty-two thousand twenty-eight dollars be raised by taxation and fifteen thousand be transferred from the WRTA Reserve for Appropriation Account. And the total amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand twenty-eight dollars be appropriated for the fiscal year twenty-one Council on Aging Budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend the Council on Aging Budget. Any green cards for questions or comments?
That's a great question. When you're looking at actual nineteen versus twenty voted...
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the actual versus the voted, and it looks like the voted was always in excess. Where does the extra money go and why is my taxes keep going up? Why are my taxes going up?
This is a specific vote on the Council on Aging. So if you, if you, if you have a question about the Council on Aging, you don't have to move the question. It's, any other questions or comments on Council on Aging Budget? All those in favor, please hold up your green cards. Oh, did somebody have one? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see in the back. We're gonna have to get fluorescent green cards next time, I think.
Hi, Tessa Johnson from Mika Circle. I have a question about the Council on Aging. As our population in this town is aging, this seems a little light. Do we have any proactive plans for the future as our populations, as they, our population ages?
I'm sorry, I only heard part of that. It's, it's very difficult, and I apologize. Can you repeat that for me, please?
My, my question is, when we first started our, when we first started our meeting, the, one of the demographics came up that our population, one in four, is over sixty-five. This budget seems a little light to have that many seniors in our, in our town. My question is, what are we doing proactively for our senior citizens?
Thank you. I think you were asking, you think the, we should be spending more in that area? Or, or you feel it's not as resource-heavy? I would agree that the seniors in this community are a definite priority, particularly of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager. What I would like to see and point out to each of you is that we have recently brought renovations to the kitchen for our seniors' centers so that we can actually do meals for our seniors in-house and not rely only on Meals on Wheels. We also, in this budget, have included an Assistant Director, which has never been funded, to my knowledge. So we're adding a nutritional consulting person within this budget, an Assistant Director to help the Director increase programs so that we can have more seniors come. I will tell you, during this pandemic, we have ramped up services to our seniors who have been shut in, and thankfully so, because they are at risk for contracting this COVID-19 virus. We have actually provided very unique services from getting people their medications from, from the pharmacies to providing them on-the-spot transportation and for even delivering groceries to them. So knowing that we are going to continue this coming year contending with this virus, I do believe we're going to have different types of services we're going to provide for our seniors. And hence, we have added personnel, including keeping our Outreach Coordinator, adding an Assistant Director, and also making sure that we have an onsite nutrition chef person to prepare meals. That's something we haven't had before. So I, I hope that makes you feel better because it's actually adding resources along with using state money as a match to provide improved or enhanced services to our seniors. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I don't see, oh, I got a green card right here, please.
Pete LeFlass, Two Linden Street. I, I didn't hear it answered, so I guess specifically on Council on Aging. The FY nineteen actual versus the FY twenty voted. What happens with the difference on that?
Thank you for your question. The difference between any actual and the fiscal nineteen actual to fiscal twenty, actually, you're looking just for comparison purposes. This is what they spent, this is what we budgeted last year. So there's actually, you don't want to take the difference between those two columns. If we looked at what was voted in fiscal nineteen to what was spent in fiscal nineteen, the difference there goes to free cash, and that's considered a one-time revenue. It's kind of like your tax return, if you will. And that then can be used for one-time items such as capital, which we'll be spending further down in the meeting.
Thank you for your question. All right. I don't see any other green cards. So Council on Aging Budget, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Council on Aging Budget passes unanimously. Moving along. At the top of page fifty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the sum of seven million four hundred one thousand ninety dollars be raised by taxation and appropriated for the fiscal year twenty-one retirement and insurance operational accounts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend the retirement and insurance budget. Excuse me, any questions or comments? Wait, wait till the mic gets...
May I ask what the retirement and the benefits are to the people and what they pay versus what we pay on their behalf as taxpayers?
I can't say that we have an exact breakdown on that, but if you, if you look at the line items, the retirement cost there is what the town pays. I couldn't really tell you individually because it depends on when you come into the retirement system, which retirement system you're in, what you're paying from your paycheck. But for example, most, in municipalities, you do not pay social security. You pay into these retirement systems. So instead of having social security taken out of your check, it goes into, as a certain percentage based on when you started, that goes into the retirement system. And the dollar amount here, the two million two hundred twenty-nine thousand ninety dollars, is what the town owes. So that is what gets passed on to the taxpayer for, for the town's share of the retirement.
Any other questions on retirement and insurance? All right. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. All right. The Retirement and Insurance Budget passes. On page fifty-five, we have two holds. The first one is the Sewer Enterprise Total.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the sum of four hundred ninety-nine thousand fifteen dollars be raised and offset by Sewer Enterprise receipts. And that four hundred sixty-five thousand fifteen dollars be appropriated for the fiscal year twenty-one Sewer Enterprise Operational Budget. And that thirty-one thousand be transferred to the General Fund to defray sewer indirect costs.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend the Sewer Enterprise Budget. Any questions or comments?
Why doesn't sewer come down the Main Street of Oxford? And we have all these old houses that are down there and is there some reason why we can't do sewer?
It's something you might want to bring up at a Selectmen's meeting or one of the other meetings, but not at the budget meeting. I'm, I'm sure it's a long-term goal of the town.
Mr. Moderator? My name is Sean Dyval, I'm your Public Works Director, and I can answer that question. When I came to town here about thirteen years ago, I actually couldn't believe that we didn't have sewers in the center of town. One of the reasons, though, we don't have sewers is because the soils there are very good. It's a lot of sand and gravel, which is very conducive to water seeping into the ground through onsite septic systems. But having said that, in recent years, Town Meeting has, has put in and adopted a Housing Opportunity Overlay Zone to increase density downtown. There is a, a project in the works, we'll say, in the very, very beginning of the works to, to reimagine what Main Street would look like, and we are nowhere near even a concept for what that might look like. We did have a public meeting on that, and there will be many more to come. And we also want to increase the efficiency of the center intersection. So given the work that we see in the next five to ten years, we think it's very prudent that we explore the idea of having sewers in the center of town. And so you'll see in the Capital Outlay Proposal before Town Meeting, a sum of money to do a sewer study to look at putting in sewers in the center of town.
Thank you, Mr. Dyval.
Does the Sewer Enterprise, is this a break-even operation? Or is it, is it costing us money or what? I see a two hundred forty-four thousand dollars for intermunicipal fees. So, I mean, are we making money with the sewers or breaking even or what, what's the story?
Thank you for your question. We're not really supposed to make money because that would be over, overcharging the sewer users, but the sewer users fund this.
Yes.
It's supposed to break even, yes.
So ideally, it's to break even. Any other questions, comments?
Excuse, excuse me. I received a thing in the mail that said that you were going to revamp the Main Street on water, and the whole Main Street, and I don't know what you were going to do. Is that something that's for real, seriously?
Is this a sewer question or...?
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Are we talking about this account or something else?
Ruled out of order. Ruled out of order, I could see. It's not dreaming to the question.
The question's out of order, so... All right, so back to any other new questions about sewer budget? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Sewer Enterprise Budget passes unanimously. Water Enterprise?
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the sum of sixty-nine thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars be raised and offset by Water Enterprise receipts. And that thirty-one thousand be appropriated from the Water Enterprise retained earnings for a total appropriation of one hundred thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars for the fiscal year twenty-one Water Enterprise Operational Budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on Water Enterprise? I don't see any green cards, so all those in favor of the Water Enterprise Budget, please raise your green cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Water Enterprise Budget passes unanimously. And unless I missed anything, we're, we got all the holds. Yes. Yes. Thank you very much. That takes care of the fiscal twenty, twenty-one budget. On to Article twelve. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money for the Capital Outlay Program for fiscal year twenty, twenty-one or act thereon. This is sponsored by... This is sponsored by the town manager. Also, I am supposed to advise you, the list of capital requests is on page fifty-seven of that same book. So everybody flip to page fifty-seven. Due to the limited availability of funds and the nature of the requested purchases, staff has proposed, and the finance committee recommends, the following items. Note that the capital outlay items are grouped by funding source.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the sum of five hundred thousand dollars be raised by taxation and appropriated for the DPW roadway repair and restoration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
The finance committee does recommend. So on the top of page fifty-seven, you see taxation. That's the half a million dollars that we're talking about. Any questions or comments on the taxation section? I don't see any green cards, so all those in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Thank you very much. Article twelve, number one, passes.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the sum of one million eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the following items, each item being considered a separate appropriation. Building Improvement Fund, two hundred sixty-five thousand. Coavant for Service Expansion, twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars. DPW Fleet Replace Repair Lease, hundred fifty thousand dollars. DPW Facility Office Space Exploration, eighty thousand dollars. DPW Parks Greenbrier Restrooms, thirty-five thousand. DPW Parks Chapie Playground Rehab, forty thousand. Fire EMS Self-Containable Breathing Apparatus. Lease Program, hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. OCC Generator, thirteen thousand one hundred forty-three dollars. Police Taser Replacement, twenty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars. OPS Math Curriculum, hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. OHS and OMS Fire Network Switches, thirty-eight thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars. Townwide Branding and Way Findings Signage, sixty thousand dollars. Townwide Green Communities Local Match, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
The finance committee does recommend. Any questions about Article twelve, Section two? I see a green card in the back here. While we're waiting for the mic, anybody else? Oh, I see one over here. Okay. Very good. We started over here, Mary. I'm sorry.
Hi. Janet Fish, fifteen Little John Circle. That question on the branding and way finding signage, sixty thousand dollars, is that just to make the street signs all in caps to small caps?
No. This has been an initiative to actually embrace the strategic master plan, which actually outlined a need after interviewing twenty-two hundred residents about trying to make our downtown more village-friendly and also to coordinate signage. If you look around town, we have a lot of signs individually that are hodgepodge, whether it's to a historical site, whether it's to a municipal building, whether it's to a ball field. And what it lacks is coordination and identity, and most communities that are trying to bring businesses and visitors and tourists that spend money downtown usually have a coordinated signage approach. So these are not just little signs. It's a whole system of signage from showing you where you park, and you don't have to see or look for a sign that is kind of obscure. It will be all coordinated color-wise and also in terms of logo. And many communities that are doing this are finding increased pedestrian foot traffic and vehicle traffic in their downtowns for whether they're visiting historic sites, doing business at town hall, visiting one of our small businesses or restaurants. So it is a way to actually improve communication with people passing through the town, as well as bringing people in a friendly way to create a village feel of town. Now, we've had a committee that has worked on actually developing this logo, and it actually looked at all kinds of things that the town of Oxford identifies with, and it's been a very good committee with historical commission people, highway people, our police department, all kinds of people who have given input, including our board of selectmen. So this is the next phase of actually implementing that logo and also the color coordination and the types of signs to communicate directly to vehicles and pedestrians where they're going in town, and to remove some of these signs that are all over the place.
What is the great is going to be another going all uppercase lowercase, we will make up perfectly good street signs that will change the... I think money could be more beneficial ways than changing perfectly good street signs from all uppercase letters to a mixture of upper and lowercase letters. I think that myself was a waste of time and money's put towards that.
But as I understand it, that's not our goal.
That's not the same thing. This is... Oh, that's why you wanted to know. Thank you. Okay. I appreciate that explanation.
Thank you for your question. And then we had a card up over here. Thank you. Oh, and one in the front later.
Clark Gate, twenty-five Towton Street. I have two questions. First question is, why in the world are we paying thirty-five thousand dollars for restroom facilities once again down Greenbrier? We might as well take thirty-five thousand dollars, go outside, and throw it up in the air. I cannot tell you how many times over the years we have fixed, repaired, we've locked the restrooms down there, the kids have broken in, ripped out toilets, sinks. We repair them, turn around, they're ripped up, the building is damaged. I mean, this is throwing money away, and we can't afford that. So why are we repairing those again?
I can answer that. Mr. Moderator, oh, wait. There is no bathroom there. It actually was completely destroyed by a large pine tree in the wintertime that came down upon it. As you know, Greenbrier Park is a wonderful partnership we have with the Army Corps of Engineers and that is located at the Hodges Dam. All of the facilities that you see at Greenbrier are allowed through this partnership over the decades, in which we are allowed to use the property and make improvements to it for any recreational use. That's why you see ball fields down there, you see volleyball courts, skate park. That is the partnership we've entered into. It's up to us to maintain those facilities, but they have let us build upon and improve the recreational services that we provide to our citizens. Since that bathroom has been completely destroyed, the Army Corps came to us and said that they believe it should be actually rebuilt, and that is an agreement that we have for being able to use all of that property and not pay the Army Corps assent. So all of that infrastructure that has been placed in there, we're allowed to use that property in a recreational way. It's only in good faith that we should actually provide what I would consider to be serviceable bathroom facilities, because we want more and more people to use Greenbrier, and you need to have actual bathroom facilities that not only operate but are accessible. And so that's the deal we've made with the Army Corps of Engineers, is a small price to pay for all of the use that the Greenbrier Park gets for our citizens, since we do not own the property.
So because of the tree, we're not able to pee?
I'm sorry.
Over the years, I've been down there with my kids when they were little. There was no bathroom because they've been ripped out, destroyed, toilets broken, everything else, doors locked. There is town functions down there, the bathrooms are locked because they couldn't trust anything. So how are we going to secure these bathrooms now that they can actually be used, not destroyed and ripped out, and you come in another couple more years, say, oops, it's destroyed by the kids once again?
Mr. Moderator?
And then I have one more question.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the members. I can't speak with what happened ten years ago. I'm living in the present. My job is to manage and make improvements and make recommendations to the townspeople that I think are important investment-wise. I can assure you, just like I have taken an approach to this budget to be extremely conservative, that if we are going to do a project and we're going to make an improvement, it's going to be a lasting improvement, and we're going to fix those kinds of problems that used to be a problem. Today, infrastructure has changed, the management of infrastructure has changed, and so I have no intentions of putting a bathroom that, in a brand-new bathroom that had the same problems it had twelve years ago. I can't speak to that. I don't want the townspeople making a decision today about something that happened twelve years ago. I don't think it's relevant, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. We had a question in the front.
The second question I have is DPW Facility Office Spaces. Why do we need more office space? We have the world headquarters there. I mean, how many more offices do we need for the DPW?
No, it's not for the DPW, but it... Mr. Moderator? Yeah. The DPW oversees many branches of our town operations, including facilities. So if you read the article, it says facilities, not necessarily the DPW headquarters. So this is about actual office space. We're in an eighteen hundreds town hall. Anybody who's visited land management, I have almost a half a dozen inspectors that have no desk to sit at. I have a building commissioner that's in this desk that is a third of the size and is out in the middle of the public that cannot actually do their work. The space is predominantly containing a multitude of file cabinets. As we've increased staff, we've never increased the footprint because you can't. It's an old building. So this is looking at the fact that the land management department is one of our biggest revenue-generating departments. It's important for us to make sure that we not only have staff, but our staff can have adequate space to do the kind of work that brings in the local receipts, that helps pay for things that do not come from taxation. So this is an important endeavor to explore, not necessarily to do anything yet, but we know we're going to, we've already run our space, and we're not operating efficiently, and I need to find out a solution. That might be several years in the making, but we definitely need to address it.
Thank you.
Just a question for the DPW. I see fleet replace repair lease purchase, hundred fifty thousand. Now, in the budget on page forty-seven, there's quite a bit of general fleet maintenance, sweeper maintenance, fluid oils and lubricants, tools and equipment for probably a hundred and seventy thousand. So it sounds to me like you're kind of double-dipping. Maybe somebody could explain that?
I think basically he's asking, what are we getting for the repair and lease purchase?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, I can answer that question. Again, my name is Sean Dyvall, Public Works Director. So what we're looking at here is actually two very distinct and different line items. So what you see in the operational budget for DPW is for the repair of town-owned vehicles, and that's public works vehicles, police vehicles, and fire EMS and council on aging vehicles. That's the line item we use for all of the parts and pieces and service that we need to keep all of the towns' vehicles operating in a good condition. What this article here and this line item here is for the first of what will be probably a five-year borrowing period to borrow a sum of money to replace a lot of aging public works vehicles. Considering that the average truck that the town buys is over two hundred thousand dollars, and that we have, what, eight or nine of them, it costs a lot of money, obviously. And it's a lot of money at one time to ask Town Meeting to appropriate, and then if you also put into the equation the needs of the fire department as well for the trucks that they buy. The proposal before Town Meeting here is to, for this to be the first of probably five debt payments that can be used towards a bigger borrowing for a bigger amount of money to work through some of the backlog we have in replacing vehicles. And with a three percent interest, this probably gets the town somewhere around seven hundred thousand dollars that we could use right away to replace vehicles and not have to come back to future town meetings in dribs and drabs trying to get an individual truck replaced.
Any other questions or comments on Section two of Article twelve?
Steve Alcone is Six Oldest Road, lifetime resident of Oxford, sort of highway department. Talking about money funded for new trucks, but I've seen quite a few new trucks riding around this town that look like they were just purchased. Can you explain where they came from, where the money came from to purchase those vehicles?
So in terms of the large trucks, the orange trucks that you see, we have one new truck that was appropriated and used to purchase probably about two years ago. The other orange trucks that we have are old, but I give credit to my staff for keeping them washed and waxed and as clean as possible, but they are, many of them, over ten years old, some approaching twenty. And they look good, they look new, but they're actually not. In terms of the red vehicles, the one tons, the three-fifties and the F-five-fifties, over the years, the town has been good in appropriating a sum of money, usually to replace one of those vehicles about once a year, sometimes once every two years.
Any answer?
I'm going to tell you, there's like three or four trucks that are brand-new. They're not ten years old, they're not five years old. So I'd like to know where the proof is, because I see them parked on Main Street, and I see them other places, because I drive all over this town, I drive all over the state. And I haven't seen these trucks a year ago. And you're not going to tell me, they just went out and got cleaned to detail. So I'd like to, I mean, I think most of them are parked down at the cemetery, but I've seen a lot just sitting around town. So if you could verify the years of all these trucks, it might satisfy my curiosity because they don't look like they're that old.
All right. Any, I think we're getting wrong this year's budget, and you're talking about what we've spent past year, so I think we're getting off track here. I'm sure at another time, they can give you a list of what we have, but everything goes through Town Meeting?
Yes.
Every purchase for the DPW goes through Town Meeting, so it's not like anybody snuck out a lot of truck while you were...
Tax paid, tax people's money coming from the town, but we don't want it to be spent foolishly.
Couldn't agree with you more.
So I mean, you gotta justify what you have in town, and...
Yeah, but we're on this year's budget, and if you'd like to know what they purchased in the past, they could help you. Well, just driving around doesn't really tell you the year it was purchased.
Forty years.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna move on. Any other questions about Section 2 of Article 12? I see a leaflet in the back. Mark Eady, 571 Main Street. Why don't we just vote on these individually, if people have a question with individual items, instead of voting it as a group? Can that be made as a motion? We're discussing them individually, so if you have a question on a particular line, just...
We want to vote on them individually.
Is there a particular line that you would like taken out? We're not gonna go line by line by line. Is there a particular line that you want changed? Is there a reason it can't be voted line by line?
League.
It's set up in blocks. The motion is for everything that's in free cash. It's been moved and seconded.
We moved the question.
All right. I heard moved the question, and I heard a second. All those in favor of moving the question, raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Okay. The motion is moved, so we go on to the vote that cuts off all debate. All those in favor of Article 12, Section 2, which is free cash, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Article 12, Section 2 passes. Section 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $192,000 be transferred from the OTS donation account and appropriated for the following items, each item being considered a separate appropriation. DPW purchase trash truck for $139,000. DPW demolition of the Jarsland School Annex, $53,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend. I'm just asking, it says OTS?
Transfer.
Oxford Transfer Station.
Oxford Transfer Station, okay. Any questions or comments on Oxford Transfer Station? I see one here. We need the speakers mics on?
Try it, try it again.
Hello?
There you are.
This purchase of a mini-compacting trash truck is the most ridiculous thing that could possibly be in, does any, do people still realize that there's a 10% unemployment rate and a lot of people aren't going to back to work? We're gonna buy a trash-compacting truck so two guys can go around and empty barrels and bring it to the transfer station, whereas they could put it in the back of a one-ton dump truck, which we have plenty of, and bring it to the transfer station like they've been doing for the past 10 or 20 years. This is $139,000 that could be spent fixing some road. I mean, this is just, we're way out of our, this is way out of...
Actually, Mr. Moderator, can I, can I address that question, and I'll then defer to the Director of the DPW? First of all, this particular fund has to actually be associated in order to expend out. This is not part of the normal taxation money. This is a separate fund that can be used for one-time types of expenses. And so that's the first piece of it. The second piece of it is, it is a, it is a fund that has very specific terms of what it can be used for. It has to be related to trash. It has to be related to trash items, and that's why you see not just the truck, but you also see the issue of a demolition because that produces trash. So it's not like you can use this for other things in town. It is very narrowly focused. And now the DPW Director, I think, can explain why this has come forward and how it will actually be more efficient and effective. And hopefully that will answer your question, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, thank you. So the, the thought behind this is, we empty, I think about 60 or so barrels of trash around the town. We have two people at, excuse me. So we have a crew of two people, five hours a week, so 20 hours a week for two people just going around to every trash bin at every playground and park and a lot of the town buildings, picking up trash. Sometimes the barrels are filled with household trash, people throw in there. If we have a big rainstorm, they weigh about 100 pounds. We got employees taking those bags, throwing them up onto a one-ton truck, and who knows what's in these things. And they throw them up in the truck. Sometimes if it's a heavy week, they'll fill two trucks and they will either bring them to the transfer station, the bags, or they will offload them at a dumpster at the DPW garage in Charlton Street. And so it's laborious, it's time-consuming, and it takes two people away from work that they could be doing elsewhere, such as mowing lawns and trimming, trimming around monuments and cemeteries and whatnot. So this is a big labor savings to the town. If this were coming from taxation, I would never put this on the floor, but because it's coming from the transfer station, it's coming from donated money to the town for the purpose of trash. In terms of efficiency, I think it's a gain for the town. The other thing, too, is by having a trash truck, instead of having two people like we have now collecting bags manually with a one-ton, we can have one person and perhaps a seasonal employee that goes around to all of these facilities and picks up the trash and brings that to the transfer station. The other thing I wanted to point out, too, is for really the first time, and hopefully in years going forward, we had a sponsored Earth Month cleanup, and as people were home with the pandemic, they called my office and said, you know, we'd really like to go around town, we'd really like to pick up roadside trash. And so we made a deal. We said, okay, if you want to, you know, improve the environment and pick up your trash in your neighborhoods, we're all for it, and we'd be happy to come by and pick up the trash. We'll even give you some bags. And people took us up on that, and we collected a tremendous amount of trash, and, but we did it the manual way. We have to the bags up onto the truck, and we got to the dumpster, the guys get up onto the truck, through the trash bags into the dumpster. And I just have a couple of quotes here that I got, and from residents in the community. It's actually pulled off of Facebook. It just, it says, "I'm amazed at how many cans make their way into the yard after a heavy wind, some in a bag, others just loose. There's someone recycling cans, but I don't know whose." I got another quote here. "We had a great time with our five-and-a-half-year-old Maya, collecting trash for almost two hours, filling two bags multiple times." Another person said, "Picked up three grocery store bags full of nip bottles on Old Webster Larned and Old Dudley Roads today. Apparently Fireball and Dr. McGilliguddy are drunk drivers' top choices." And this picture posted, and we said thank you to the volunteers. They cleaned up a section of the French River near Clara Barton Road this week. So these are the types of things we want to do. We want to get out into the community. We want to support people that want to clean up the community. It makes it a whole lot more efficient and effective. If we have a truck, throw the trash in and bring it to the transfer station. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Question back, do you have one, too, sir? Okay.
Collectgate, 105 Charlton Street. So line item up above that you need $80,000 for office-based exploration or to lease. Why are we going to demolish the Jarsland School Annex where that could be used for offices? I mean, kids for many years have had classrooms in there and everything else. We've had the food pantry in there.
I'm gonna stop you there because we, I'm sure we have a quick answer to that.
Yeah, the building is completely gone by its shelf life, and I'm not kidding you. The walls have completely deteriorated, the roof has been leaking for years. It was not well-maintained. It was before my time. It was only used as a small rental, and we discovered that during that time period, even the people who were renting did not make any improvements to it. It's actually a health hazard. It has mold in it, it has severe water damage, the electricity costs are outrageous, and that's how it's actually was heated. So it is, it is a building that was a modular building that was considered to be temporary in its day, and I don't know how it has actually even survived all these years and even was being used recently until those tenants were moved along because the facility was actually not safe, and it was deemed that way by our building inspectors.
Thank you. We have a question at the front.
This is kind of a general question. Who cleans up the rural field up in Oxford? Is that the town's responsibility? If it is, I mean, if it is, whatever, you guys owe me money. I picked up over 100 cans and bottles, broken glass, air conditioner, a battery, and right at this time, there are two box screens and mattresses and a full mattress up here. The place is disgusting.
Sir, sir, sir. Thank you for, thank you for your comments, but we're talking about the donation.
Ruled out of order.
Sir, thank you. Sir, sir, please take your seat. Plea, please take your seat. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. I don't see any other cards. So all those in favor of Article 12, Section 3, Oxford Transfer Station Donation Account, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. And Article 12, Section 3 passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $126,000 be transferred from the Building Inspector Revolving Fund and appropriated for the following items, each item being considered a separate appropriation. Building Improvement Fund, $100,000. Shared Vehicle for Inspections, $26,000.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on Building Inspector Revolving Fund? Any others? Thank you.
Can you just explain what the Building Improvement Fund is and why it needs $100,000? And what vehicles or vehicle do they currently use that costs $26,000 to run? I mean, I don't understand a shared vehicle. Are they using their personal vehicles?
You want to take the improvement fund, I'll take the shared vehicle. The Building Improvement Fund is a fund that is used to improve our facilities. There are many, many projects that cost less than, say, $25,000, and some that are more than that. And instead of having a separate appropriation for every single item, we have this fund called the Building Improvement Fund, which gives us some leeway during the year if something, such as boilers over at the community center, go during the year, where we have a place to go to keep our buildings maintained. That's the point of that fund. And the town manager will speak about the inspection vehicles.
So again, the funds that are generated from that come from people taking out permits and actually, no, excuse me, I'm on the wrong thing. All right, but, all right, I'll talk about the shared vehicle, because I know that very well, sorry. So the shared vehicle is, right now, we have one old Ford Explorer that is shared through multiple departments, our assessors' office, our building office, and anybody who needs to use a town vehicle that has a seal on it. Right now, we have a lot of people who need to access a town vehicle, which is really on its last legs, and we do not have the ability to actually timely go out and do inspections that is using one vehicle for all of those different personnel. One vehicle is not enough, and the vehicle that is there is not allowed to be taken out beyond the town borders because our mechanics have deemed it way beyond its safety parameters. And anytime it has been taken out, it has actually been, it broke down on the way to Boston for a tax appellate board hearing when the assessor tried to use it. So it is something that continues to be sort of patched, but the more important thing is we have one vehicle for all of the inspector divisions, and it's just not an efficient and effective way to use our personnel to go out and do their job.
Thank you. Any other questions on Building Inspector Revolving Fund? I don't see any cards. So all those in favor of Article 12, Section 4, Building Inspector Revolving Fund, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Article 12, Section 4 passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $46,857 be transferred from FEMA available funds and appropriated for the OCC generator.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend. OCC being the Oxford Community Center, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions or comments on Article 12, Section 5? Seeing no cards, I'll ask you to, all those in favor, raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Article 12, Section 5 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $85,000 be transferred from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund and appropriated for the paving of North Cemetery.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on Article 12, Section 6, Cemetery Perpetual Fund, Perpetual Care Fund? Seeing no cards, I'll ask you, all those in favor, raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Article 12, Section 6 passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $40,000 be transferred from Sura Enterprise retained earnings and appropriated for the Oxford Center sewer feasibility study.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee... Finance Committee does recommend. Any questions or comments about Sewer Enterprise retained earnings? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote on Article 12, Section 7, Sewer Enterprise retained earnings. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Article 12, Section 7 passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to accept Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, which establishes a special revenue fund known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to reserve cable franchise fees and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support PEG access services and oversight and renewal of the cable franchise agreement. The fund to be operational for fiscal year 2021, which begins on July 1, 2020, or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Articles 13 be adopted as printed in the law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend. And by the way, I believe PEG is Public Education and Government? That's what the PEG stands for. Any questions or comments on Article 13? Seeing no cards, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 13, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Article 13 passes unanimously. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to transfer some of money from available funds to the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund and appropriate from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund set some for salaries and expenses related to public access programs and services or act thereon, sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $100,000 be transferred from free cash and be appropriated to the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend. Questions or comments on Article 14? I don't see any green cards, so all those in favor? No, way in the back, okay.
Mark Peterson, 16 Depot Road. My annual question, what is our free cash balance?
What is our free cash balance? The beginning balance, I can tell you, I'll tell you the ending balance right here. A hundred thousand dollars and everything else we spent, that leaves $3,499. And we began with $1,415,482.
I guess I wasn't specific. How much total have we spent tonight that will be reduced from that $1 million?
Well, free cash is one-time money that we get approved by the state every year, and we were approved for $1,415,482. With all the appropriations we've made from that balance tonight, we will have $3,499 left, and expires June 30th. We'll be getting a new appropriation for this year.
Oh.
Okay. Could you repeat that?
This, this is a balance that gets approved every year, and free cash, as we've mentioned before, is what's left over. The state approves it each year. We have one, we had $1 million, I've got to find it again, $1,400 and something thousand.
$15,000.
$1,415,482. Can you hear me?
And it expires every year on June 30th. It's one-time revenue. That's why we put it towards capital. It would not be a safe bet to ever include it in a budget because free cash numbers change depending on what we have for reimbursements, what money we may not expend, where we have grant money that, that comes in. So it's considered one-time money, and the Department of Revenue emphasizes that one-time money should be spent on one-time items. Hence, we've got it here within this capital plan to be used, but it's not something you can carry over from year to year. Our stabilization account, which is our piggy bank, excuse me, is something you can carry over year to year. In that one, we have over $1.3 million there for our piggy bank, but we don't touch that because it's something that is there for our savings. Whereas free cash would expire, and if we don't use it towards a one-time item, we'd have to figure out some kind of appropriation for it.
Are there any other questions on Article 14? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 14, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Article 14 passes. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to the provisions of General Law's Chapter 44 or any other enabling legislation and appropriate a sum of money to pay costs of engineering, design, constructing, and reconstructing roadways throughout the town, including the payment of all other costs to, the payment, not the pavement, of all other costs incidental and related thereto, provided, however, that this is, if this appropriation is to be raised by borrowing, any borrowing authorization shall be contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2 1/2 Detention Exclusion Referendum under General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21C-K or Act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $15 million to pay costs of a multi-year project of engineering, designing, constructing, and reconstructing roadways throughout the town, including the pay, payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectman, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, parentheses 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. No amount shall be borrowed or expended here or under unless the town shall have voted to exclude the amounts required to pay any such borrowing from the limitation on total property tax set forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21C, also known as Proposition 2 1/2. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of insurance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a limp, by like amount. The initial borrowing under this vote shall not exceed $5 million. Subsequently, borrowing of additional amounts under this vote shall not exceed $5 million and shall be issued at intervals of at least five years from the date of issue of the initial borrowing or the second borrowing made pursuant to this vote, as the case may be, unless the selectman shall have determined that the borrowing of such funds in a large amount and/or on a more rapid basis shall be in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Can you repeat that? Sure. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments on Article 15? I have one here, any others? I have one over there.
All right, so does this have to pass by a 2/3 vote in here tonight?
I heard yes.
Okay, and then it has to pass by a 2/3 vote at the voting next week?
No, well, it hasn't passed by 2/3 here, but the general voting is just, it just has to pass. It just has to be more than half, but 2/3 tonight.
All right. It's a lot of money. And what's the estimated cost per household for a house, let's say valued at $375,000?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that people could hear our DPW director because his microphone, I don't think amplifies his voice well. I'll even give up mine because I think mine is working pretty good. The reason we are putting this before the townspeople, we have heard loud and clear since I've been here that we have a problem with our roads. And you don't have to be a rocket scientist to understand that our roads are in very, very difficult and challenging state. People have said, as we had presented the notion of needing a DPW facilities headquarters, that people said that they would rather fix the roads first and then will consider in the future an actual headquarters or building infrastructure that we badly need. This is an effort to put together a borrowing plan that minimizes the impact on the taxpayer. I know Sean is going to speak to that. I have seen a number of communities that are about our size that have, instead of putting in operational, I mean, a debt override situation, which stays permanently on the taxpayer, we have put together a debt exclusion, which means once the debt is paid, it goes away. We get a very nominal amount of road improvement funding from the state. You, you voted on accepting that earlier, a half a million dollars. Half a million dollars won't even do a half, a half a mile road, believe it or not. We cannot keep up with the funding that the state provides. And so we have, for the last two years, attempted to see if we put a cash infusion into the road repair situation that maybe we could get ahead. And we absolutely have not been able to get ahead, even though we've taken $500,000 of our operational budget for a one-time capital need. And so the DPW director, myself, our bonding authorities, we all looked at what we have for extending debt right now. We have very little debt in this town. It's a good time period to actually borrow because rates are very, very low. And what we try to do is stagger this borrowing, have enough infusion that comes in every five years so that we can get ahead of the problem because this has been decades in the making for disrepair. And it's not the fault of the DPW, their diligence, or this and that. It comes down to simple funding. There are communities, Grafton and other communities, that actually have put together overrides. I don't think that's the right thing. I think we need to see if we put money where our mouth is, that we can actually get ahead of this problem and repair a substantive amount of roads across the town, not just the main roads that people are traveling through the community, but I'm talking about the neighborhood roads. And so I'm going to let the DPW director explain what you should find in your packets is this entire pavement management update to help educate everybody here on what this impact will be and how we are trying to minimize this impact but improve our roadways in a very strategic, methodical way. Mr. Director?
Thank you. Can everyone, everyone can hear me okay? Okay. So I want to direct your attention to the insert in your budget book here with the colorful first page. It says 2020 Pavement Management Update. And I'm going to walk you through each page. So since 2011, DPW has instituted what's called a pavement management system. And it's essentially a computer model that looks at the condition of town roadways and evaluates the town roadways in terms of their distress. Think about cracks, potholes, graveling and shoveling and things of that nature. And so the, the, the model gives each roadway what's called a PCI, Pavement Condition Index, zero being the worst, 100 being the best. And we use this model to inform us on what budgetary input we should put in and what the network average PCI does in response to that budget input. So on the upper right-hand side is a generalized curve of what happens to pavement over time. It should be no surprise, the longer a pavement is out there, it, it deteriorates. And what's interesting about pavement, though, is in the first few years, it maintains itself pretty well. But then when you get out to about 10 years or so, it really starts falling down the curve. And when it falls down the curve, it costs a lot more money to bring that street, bring that pavement condition back up on the curve. And so currently, our network average is 62. And that's what you can see in the blue chart, or blue chart just below the upper blue chart. And a 62 is not good. It's not good at all. And what that says is most of Oxford's roadways need structural improvements, such as reconstruction, leveling, overlaying. And that network PCI being at 62 translates into a significant cost to bring that average up. The graph on the middle right shows the amount of miles in each PCI band. And you'll notice the high concentration of roadways between 40 and 55 PCI. And these bands are primarily your secondary neighborhood roadways and roadways that I've heard loud and clear from the community are the most concerning. And the chart below is a breakdown of backlog in any particular category of work. And you'll see the bulk of the cost is in the structural, in the base rehab categories. So if you want to go to page 2. In 2015, DPW presented us a roadway condition report to the Board of Selectmen. Several budget scenarios were modeled to see, and you can see that at the, at the top. And we looked at different inputs in budget, $700,000 a year, $1 million a year, $1.45 million a year, and $1.75 million a year. And as you might predict, the more money we put in, the higher the PCI average goes. But clearly, you know, putting in those budget values, it's a lot of money. And so we arrived at, at the idea that we needed $1 million a year to maintain our roadways. And when I say $1 million a year to maintain our roadways, it means the network average doesn't get any better. The $1 million keeps the town level. And what I hear from the community is people want to see improvement. And we just simply can't get there with $1 million a year. But we, we went with the $1 million because it was a convenient number in terms of it keeping the PCI level, but it also matched our Chapter 90 funding 1 to 1. So we get about $500,000 a year from Chapter 90. And the town matches that 1 for 1, $500,000 a year. So between 2015 and 2020, as predicted, the PCI was maintained at about 62. So looking forward, the town has a decision to make. If we just go with Chapter 90, you can see what happens to the PCI. It goes from 62 down to 55. And when you get down to a network average of 55, you're basically in failure. The, if the town could maintain matching Chapter 91 for 1, again, we about still maintain our PCI, but we're not really going to get into the neighborhood streets because the funding is prioritized. It takes care of the arterial and collector streets. So if you live on a residential street, you're probably not going to see much improvement. So we looked at various scenarios on how we could raise the PCI, get into the neighborhood streets, and make some improvements that you all want. And what we arrived at is fifteen million dollars, over fifteen years, with a payback over 25 years, broken up into three five-million-dollar chunks. And what you can see on this chart and in the bar chart, we can make some serious improvement with the fifteen-million-dollar borrowing. And if you look at the far right, you'll see that the capital dollars and the capital miles, that's what's represented in those numbers in the columns, goes way up. But I think what's most important to folks here, what's shown in the blue bars, goes way up. So we get capital work done and we get maintenance done on the work that down the line was previous capital work. So I want to turn you now to page three, because your next question is how we're going to pay for it. So with the financial modeling we did, we took the assessor's mode value. And it's not a median value. You've probably heard that term before. But a mode value in a data set is the most occurring number. So most of the Oxford residential properties are valued at two hundred twelve thousand four hundred, which is different from mean, which is higher, and that's just the straight-up average of your least-valued properties to your highest-valued properties. So the mode is what reflects what most people's valuation is. So on this chart, I put in the portion of the debt payments that are paid towards the police station and the Oxford Middle School as a baseline. And you'll see that's ninety-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. That is what is in your tax bill right now if you have a mode-valued home. Ninety-six dollars eighty-seven cents is part of your tax bill on a yearly basis. So we use that as our benchmark. And we say, okay, if we add the fifteen million dollars, what is the impact to the taxpayer? The impact is the, I'm colorblind here, the gray bars or light blue bars. And that's the overall impact. But when you take off the police debt and take off the middle school roof debt, it changes. So what I want to point you to now is the final slide, which is a blow-up of what you see in the blue box. So the blue box is, again, that blow-up. This is the chart that shows that. I've overlaid on there when each five-million-dollar borrowing would occur. Obviously, we'd want to borrow the first five million upfront, get to five years down the road, borrow the next five million, fifteen years, the third five million. So what's written in those yellow bars is the impact per year. Once you take off the police station and the middle school roof debt, it's the net. People, like I said, are used to paying ninety-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. When you add the debt, it goes up, obviously. But when it comes down, when those other debts are paid off, it has an effect of bringing down what the net is. So over the borrowing period to the mode-valued home, the total net would be about thirteen hundred dollars a year. I'm sorry, a total of thirteen hundred dollars financed over 25 years. And you can see the average is there, about fifty-five dollars a year, about four dollars and fifty cents a month. So that's really what it comes down to. We want to make an investment in the roadways. We want to make a splash. If you want to get into your neighborhoods, it's going to cost some money. Comes down to town meeting, and it comes down to folks voting at the annual election next week on whether or not this is what the town can afford. But doing all of the modeling and all of the financial analysis, this is where we're at. And so I know it's a big decision. I know it comes with a lot of heartache, especially folks in this post-pandemic year, struggling to get by. I understand that. Your Board of Selectmen understands that. Town manager, finance committee understands that. So this is my proposal, my presentation. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And we have a hand up in the second row?
Hi, my name is Vincent Purili. I live at Seventeen Marshall Street. I've been there for 42 years. My road, twice when I first got there, used to come with the stones and the oil, whatever. Now there's a mini big dig going around my street, traffic you can't believe. Is IPG going to pay for any of that? Why aren't they paying for some of the roads down us? That's section of the town instead of us.
They, I don't know what, I couldn't hear which road. Oh, oh, so that entire project is actually being funded by both the state and IPG, not the taxpayers. So that... Right, so...
Still going on?
Well, we just started it. Yes, but we just started that project this past, in earnest, this past spring, last fall, they did the preliminary utility work. But it's on target and it's on budget as far as the state is concerned. Obviously, the pandemic has, you know, given it its fits and starts, but that's actually a separate thing. But it shows you how quickly, when you have an infusion of money, and in that case, it's 2.3 million dollars to do all of that infrastructure and to make a light signal there for improved safety in the sidewalks, how expensive roads are. Now, that's for a major road that's, you know, being used back and forth through towns, two towns, three towns, actually. And it's a fairly heavily commuted road, commuter road for IPG as well. It just points to the fact that if we're only spending five hundred thousand dollars to try to bring up all of our roads with state money, we're never going to get there. And so for four dollars and fifty cents a month, which I spend a lot of time at McDonald's lately during this pandemic, I hate to tell you, but a filet of fish is four dollars and fifty cents. And I'm just telling you that for four dollars and fifty cents for the average tax bill, I think you're not going to get better than that to take an infusion of five million dollars, not to work on the major main roads, but to go into the neighborhoods. The intention of this is to publish every year which roads are being done in all of these small roads that we want to get to. We simply don't have money to do that. And so all communities that have good roads actually, either through a debt exclusion or an override, actually put money towards it. And like I said, for four dollars and fifty-five cents a month, over the period of the 25 years, spending only thirteen hundred to improve all of our roads, almost at seventy percent is what we're anticipating, roughly, that we might be able to improve almost seventy percent of our roads. A hundred percent of all of those. Excuse me. I'm in error. A hundred percent of all of our roads. At the end of the entire fifteen million infused, that's what we're expected to do for all of the small roads, the neighborhood roads.
My other question is, you're saying the police department and the middle school project, are they going to come on? But you haven't told us how many more years you're doing this?
Oh, it's in the presentation, but I know it's not easy to see. So I think it's nine years. Let me see. Both the police department, the police headquarters comes off in nine years, and the middle school comes off in about 12, 13, 14 years? Fourteen years.
On the bottom of page three?
Yep.
The bottom of page three, it's light and it's small, but those are the years.
We're still, we're actually going to be paying that, the big money upfront. When is the five dollars and something going to come in? Where did I see the ninety-six? Oh, on your chart, on your charts. The ninety-six eighty-seven, would that be included with the police department, the middle school project, and now the paving? As you mentioned that afterwards, when those two projects...
On page three, you have a benchmark of ninety-six.
I'm having trouble hearing this question. What's the question?
He's asking about the ninety-six dollars, the benchmark on page three.
The benchmark value is the amount that is being paid right now for the police station and the middle school roof. For a home that's valued at two hundred twelve thousand four hundred dollars, that's how much, when you pay your taxes, ninety-six dollars and eighty-seven cents that you're paying in your annual tax bill is going to pay that debt.
If we pass this, you're saying only fifty-four dollars a year out of more of my taxes?
Uh huh.
Per thousand?
No, it's not per thousand.
Per valuation?
The fifty-four dollars per year is the average over 25 years that you pay. Some years will be higher, some years will be lower. When you average it out over 25 years, that's the annual payment.
Is inflation going to stay the same for the next 25 years? I mean, you've got a solid number here, but inflation has been going up and up and up. My taxes never went down, down, down. And in third-party two years, my first payment was eight hundred dollars in this town. I'm close to four thousand a year.
So, Mr. Moderator, I think the gentleman has a good point. People constantly talk about their tax value on their home. The taxation figure that comes to you is based on property valuation, which is based on property sales. So this town, believe it or not, through the master plan survey, had acknowledged that after looking at multiple communities in our area, Oxford is considered one of the most affordable communities in the entire Commonwealth because of the value of its homes, but more importantly, because it's desirable. Many people buy homes in this town, and that, as you can see, has raised people's property values. So that is where that figure of two hundred and twelve thousand comes from. It doesn't come from the spending portion. It comes from the valuation of people selling their homes. And I know for people who live in a town for 30 years, it's no consolation that the property values go up. But when you sell your home, you're really happy to be in a quality community because your home is worth more money. And so it's a catch-22, but we don't control the property valuations. The real estate purchases and sales do in this town. And despite that, though, it shows that the average home is affordable to the tune of two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And if we take that figure, which is pretty solid, and we borrow a solid number, and we borrow at a rate that is determined in advance, then we know what our cost is going to be. And that's why we can project that monthly cost of four dollars and, imagine a filet of fish being four hundred dollars. The four dollars and fifty-five cents for the average home, that is the cost per month, and the fifty-four dollars is, you know, per annual. So we can do that extrapolation. We do it with banks, and we do it with our lenders. And so those are solid numbers.
Thank you. We have a question way in the back.
Becky Harvey, 21, Old Dudley Road. I definitely think it's way worth it to do fifty bucks or so a year, just for the wear and tear on my car loan. It's crazy. But my question is, originally you said that fifteen million, while the rates are so low right now, but you're talking about doing the five million spread over the fifteen. So is there any kind of a guarantee on the rate that you're going to get on the future five million installments? Or is it just kind of, it's going to be five million at a low rate and then five million at whatever the rate is in the future?
A question about finance, cost, and interest. In this projection, we estimated three and four percent interest in today's climate. I'm going to guess we could probably get a little bit better, given the amount of borrowing in the borrowing term.
Thank you. Question, Mary, right about there. Thank you.
Collette, 105 Cheltenham Street. I have just one simple question. If this gets passed tonight, and has to go, it's going to be voted on by the voters on Tuesday, if that gets turned down at the polls, where does all this stand? Are we still going forward on this? How does that vote affect whatever decision we make tonight?
It nullifies. In other words, there is no money additional to spend on roads, period. You know, anytime you're doing a debt exclusion article, you know, part of our job is to communicate as much as possible about a strategic capital investment. And right now, what you've heard from our DPW director, we basically don't have any huge borrowing that's been on our horizon. And we have been very good at paying off small borrowing authorizations, including the police department and the middle school roof and renovation. So those are the only two things we have, and our auditors have warned us that our bond rate for this town can be downgraded because we don't borrow to repair our infrastructure. Sometimes people say, you know, you can be penny wise and pound foolish. In terms of showing and demonstrating that we're repairing our buildings and our roads, people understand that doesn't come from an operational budget. It has to come from one-time money. This debt exclusion is an infusion of one-time money over 15 years, paid over 25 years to minimize the impact on the taxpayer. But it shows to bonding authorities and raiders that we are actually serious about our infrastructure. What the DPW director has pointed out, that it's an opportune time for us to do this because we also have just two projects that are coming off of what would be considered added to the normal tax bill. So it's actually a good time to do it. The rates are favorable. The amount that we've been able to project and put together for a plan is stable, and it shows the minimal impact to the town's normal or average taxpayer. And that is what our goal has been, so that we can actually address this issue that's not going to go away. And if we don't address it soon, we're going to pay a lot more because we're going to have huge infrastructure that has actually deteriorated so much that we have to repair the entire road instead of the surface of roads. So we're trying to get ahead of it before it costs more money because we didn't plan appropriately and communicate to the people of this town that we need to take this on and do it in a one-time debt exclusion.
Thank you.
Paul Boris, 18 Harley Street. I think people are confused. This ninety-six dollars is not going away until, what, nine and 13 years when that's paid? So that's going to continue to be there, plus this fifty-four average you're saying?
So, that's gonna continue to be there, plus this fifty-four average you're saying?
The ninety-six dollars per year that is gonna be there? I couldn't- Was your question that the ninety-six dollars per year would be there?
Yeah, still, we're still gonna have that for the nine years and the thirteen years that we owe, right? I mean, you're making it sound like that's going away and we're only gonna pay fifty-four. The way I understand it, you're, you're gonna pay that ninety-six plus the fifty-four. Ninety-six for nine years for the police station and thirteen for the school or whatever.
So, so in the early years of the bombing, the ninety-six, eighty-seven benchmark is still there, but as you can see, as you go down through the years, the police station comes off, the middle school roof comes off, and that eliminates the benchmark, but we use FY twenty to, to establish the benchmark, to know what the net increase would be for the roadway borrowing.
But you're making people believe that that ninety-six dollars is not even there no more. I mean, we're still gonna pay that. I mean, our taxes, my house just went from a hundred-and-ninety-six to two-hundred-and-twenty-five value. You've got taxes there, now you want this other ninety-six plus, plus the fifty-four. But the ninety-six, we're still paying, we're gonna continue to pay. You're making people think, dude, that's off the board, we're not paying that.
Mr. Moderator, the, the ninety-six, eighty-seven is what, we'll call it what you feel now, right? It's what you pay for, for the debt. If you extend that out, because that's what you feel, you know, year after year, all these years, if you maintain that, that is your base, because that's what you've been paying these years, and you add the roadway borrowing, borrowing to it, the net is what I'm showing here on this yellow chart, you know, over twenty-five years, thirteen-hundred dollars or so. That's the net increase averaged out over twenty-five years over the benchmark. But once the debt comes off from the police station and the middle school, even though it's off, so to speak, you're still feeling it, the net increase over what you felt these years, paying for the police station and the middle school roof, is the thirteen-hundred dollars.
We've got a question right over here.
Sean, you and I have discussed this numerous times. I totally support you, but my question is, I think there's gonna be some others at the same time. Uh, you're going by the PCI, the total mileage, you don't really have a breakdown of how many roads, um, and who's determining, uh, what roads? As an example, use my own, uh, Mark Peterson, sixteen Depot Road. Is Depot Road going to be considered a main road where Beverly, Burbank, Bailey, and that neighborhood are gonna be considered your cluster, your neighborhood that you're gonna do?
So, I'll put it to you this way. So, the town has eighty-nine-point-five miles of roadway, public roadway that we can, uh, we can spend Chapter ninety money on, we can spend town money on. With the fifteen-million-dollar borrowing, we can get to, uh, it's a hundred-and-fourteen miles of roadway, which means we can look back on the roads that we did in the early part of this, uh, this exercise. So, my overall message to the meeting here is, we're gonna get to your road, we're gonna get to every road in the town of Oxford with this amount of money. Now, what we do to that roadway is, is predicated on the best way to spend those dollars. The computer model helps us determine what to do with, with each individual street in terms of its condition and, you know, getting the best bang for the buck, so to speak. You know, some of those things might be just an overlay, uh, some of those things might be a chip seal, uh, some of those things might be a base reconstruction, and, and some of those things may be the DPW itself with a rented or bought, uh, paving machine and a roller to get to some of these roadways and really make a lot of ground, because we can do that labor in-house.
Are there any other questions?
First of all, I am just kind of bowled over with such a huge project of what a good job you have done to break it down to this, and I even think about, all right, bring it down to a monthly amount and a weekly amount is less than a dollar. So, how quickly do you spend a dollar? I know it's a hard time for a lot of people, and I am a retiree, so we don't have a large budget, but I do have to say that we do need to do these roads. It's costing a lot on car repairs for people that have to travel, all the, the bad roads in town, which there are many. Uh, if we don't take this on, what is the cost in the future? Uh, it's not gonna go away. We can't just say, oh, this is, I mean, I am just bowled over at the creativity of what a great job you've done. I do have a concern with the voting question. I did, uh, see on a mail-in ballot how the question is worded, and before I learned more about this today and also in the paper, it, the way the question is, or the way it's worded is like, I think you don't know whether you're supposed to say yes or no, uh, it's really kind of legalese, and, uh, I'm very concerned about that, that people aren't gonna know what their answer is and what it should be. Right now, I think I wanna go yes if I wanna go for it, the way it's written on the ballot. So, just, uh, just if you can comment on that, thank you.
I just wanna mention that our town council said that the wording on the ballot is set by state statute. So, yes, it, it is very legalese, but every one of those words has to, is there for a particular reason, and it's, it's not to confuse, it's, it's to be legal. Stan, then anybody else?
Oh.
We, we can't hear you, I'm sorry. That is correct. She, she's asking, because of the wording, she wants to make sure she votes correctly, which is a good question. So, yes means you do want it to go through, you want it to go to, uh, improving the roads, and a no means you do not want the project to go through. So, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so, uh, if you get this fifteen million, are you still gonna need the five-hundred-thousand a year from the town to go with the Chapter ninety money? Because fifteen million plus a million a year for ten years, fifteen years, is another fifteen million, so that's thirty. So, this project is gonna turn into a thirty-million-dollar project, not a fifteen-million-dollar project. I mean, I, I'll tell ya, it just, it's a big number for people to swallow, and, uh, I guess I just kinda missed the days when the oil truck would come down the street-
Oh, I miss them too.
-and they would chip, put the stone or the sand on top of it, and be done with it. Now, I see Sean tonight is mentioning chip sealing again, where he's made it very clearly known that he's vehemently against it, but now we're talking about chip sealing again. So, I mean, I, I'll tell ya, if, if Charlton chip sealed a bunch of roads last year, and they're absolutely beautiful, absolutely beautiful. Thompson, Connecticut did it, Woodstock, Connecticut did it.
You can go.
They're absolutely beautiful.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Okay, Mr. Moderator, can I address that, that comment, that question, please? Thank you. Um, first of all, I'm not vehemently against chip seal, let's just start there. Chip seal in the right location is a fantastic treatment for a roadway. Typically, chip seals are reserved for roadways that have good shape, good profile, that have previously been paved with hot mic sass fall. It's a preservative measure. Putting chip seal over chip seal over chip seal over a road that has never been paved will never get you the longevity of the investment the town makes in the chip seal. That's first of all. Second of all, the fifteen million, uh, would not then need the town to appropriate five-hundred-thousand dollars separately to match Chapter ninety. The fifteen million is the fifteen million. Chapter ninety, however, would remain. So, we'd have the fifteen million dollars and the five-hundred-thousand dollars in Chapter ninety, year after year.
Thank you. Gentleman in the front.
Roger McCarthy, eighteen Warner Road. Sean, um, so, I, I might be oversimplifying this, but we're, we're talking about eighteen-five here, and then, um, you know, you talked about rehab versus maintenance. So, are we adding the million dollars a year for fifteen years on top of that? So, we're at, you know, like thirty-four million?
We're adding a million on top of that, so, I think they wonder if we're gonna keep the million, you just explained it, I think.
Are you saying what's the total investment in the roads during that period? Is that basically the reason?
He's basically asking what's the total investment in the years? If you get this passed, it's still like, well, we're, we're gonna spend plus-
So, we would be spending fifteen million over the twenty-five, I mean, over the, um, fifteen years, right? Five and five and five. So, that's fifteen million over fifteen years, and then you would take the normal average Chapter ninety, which is the state funding, which is usually about a half a million. So, if you take that half a million and you multiply that out times fifteen years, the two of those together is what we would be spending. We have made that initial commitment of using operational funds to try to patch this gap for the last two years. The Department of Revenue frowns upon that, um, because we're using operational, uh, budgetary monies that could go to all kinds of programs and services that are regularly included in our budget, and we're using that money for a capital expense, and that's a big no-no in financial world, that we're doing it the wrong way. You should not be using operational money for capital purchases and capital infrastructure upgrades. So, that five-hundred-thousand dollars that we're using right now, I would hope we would be able to put it back into other programs and services right now that we're not being able to use it for.
So, let, let me try and clarify, Jen. So, um, look, looking at the numbers that Sean presented here, okay, we're at, I don't have my glasses on, but, uh, eighteen-five, okay? And that's, that looks to me like that's just rehab. So, if we have to consider that over those fifteen years, we still need to maintain the rest of the roads in town at a cost of a million dollars a year, we're at somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-four million. So, if we look at the money that we're gonna borrow and then the, uh, Chapter whatever money, the, the five-hundred thousand, um, we're at like, what, twenty-two-five? So, to me, you know, we, we still, even after borrowing this money, we're at a shortfall or we never catch up with the roads. Can you understand what I'm asking, Sean?
You're, you're, you're still thinking that we're not gonna catch up with twen- with that infusion? Um, I think that DPW director and the pavement management specialists would think differently. Um, they do believe by raising our PCI index that we will have substantively improved roads because we've made this infusion. Um, and they use it based on costs in the, and the, they've actually gone to every single street and evaluated the condition. So, they use that to understand what would need to be, um, repaired, and they base that figure that they've given to us, that we would need this amount of money to try to bring that index up, which means we've improved most roads. I will commit to this, um, body that is here tonight and to the general public, that when and if this debt exclusion passes tonight, it sends a very strong message to the public that is not here tonight, that you've listened to a lot of the information and you've taken it under careful consideration, and you think that this issue is important enough for the entire town to make a decision about. So, this isn't just about whether you support it, but whether you support the notion of, um, the democratic values of the whole community getting to, to decide this, and that's why they, we do these borrowings as a debt exclusion. And so, that twenty-two million that you're talking about, it's really only fifteen million that we're borrowing for a specific period of time, but you're right, that infusion will actually improve our roads. And if this passes, I will tell you that, similar to a budget book that you will get every year, the DPW director will be directed to indicate which roads we are going to undertake with that money, so that we can show to the public every year which roads are gonna be tackled and the reasons why they are based on the actual, um, information that is raised by our PCI Pavement Management System evaluation. So, you would know ahead of time, excuse me, you would know ahead of time, um, which roads are being paved, paved every single year. And that way, the taxpayers can see what's happening, and they can evaluate whether we're doing it appropriately with that fifteen million dollars plus the seven and a half over a period of time. But we're not borrowing seven and a half on top of fifteen million.
I've got a question in the middle. Motion to move the question? Been moved and seconded. All those in favor of moving the question and cutting off debate, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. Motion passes, so, uh, that does cut off all debate. We're now gonna call for the vote. It's been so long, I think it was Article fifteen, yes? We're still on fifteen. All those in favor of Article fifteen, please, please raise your green pamphlets. Thank you. All those opposed to Article fifteen, please raise your green pamphlets. All right. Uh, I do declare a two-thirds vote. Article fifteen passes. And now it moves on to, um, Tuesday's election. So, again, if you want it to pass, you want to vote yes on Tuesday. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifty-eight, to allow imposition of a municipal charges leaning on real property located within the town for animal control charges or fees, including but not limited to boarding and veterinarian costs, if those charges or fees have not been paid by the due date or act thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article sixteen be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Who was it, uh, put forth?
Oh.
Who was it? There's no note about who put it forth.
Oh, I, I did with the animal control officer, I'm so sorry. I'm the sponsor.
Town manager. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends-
The Finance Committee does recommend questions and comments on Article sixteen. Uh, I see a hand right there.
Why are we still housing it and causing it to, uh, maybe have veterinary services rather than turning it over to the homeowner and letting them do it? I don't understand why we're taking care of an animal that we know who owns it, why don't we give it back to them?
Uh, so, um, if I, I mean, Mr. Moderator, uh, the animal control officer has so many different, um, types of cases that they get involved in with, uh, animals, uh, from picking stray animals up on the side of the road that they can house a border for more than a month where owners don't come forward, um, don't know that the animal's there even though that we advertise and, uh, you would expect people to check things out. Oftentimes, people are away on vacation and somebody's watching their animal, sometimes people are gone for a month. We had a case in which somebody was literally in Europe for a month, had no idea that their pet had gotten out, um, for the person who was overseeing the pet, and, um, the cost mounted. Those are the kind of cases where sometimes people come back and they say, oh, my goodness, I, I shouldn't have to pay that. Um, we also have animal cruelty cases. This past year, um, the animal control officer, along with the police department, had over twenty-five animals that they were, that was taken from a home, and some of those animals are still being boarded at our facility because it's an ongoing, um, case. There is no way for the town, uh, to actually collect any monies if someone refuses to pay. And so, this is only for boarding and veterinarian costs, um, that may be incurred from any particular long-term case in which the animal control officer- long-term case in which the animal control officer is under law obliged to take care of and assure the well-being of the animal.
Any other questions? Seeing no cards, I'm gonna call for a vote on Article sixteen. All those in favor of Article sixteen, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article sixteen passes. And I believe Article seventeen is our very last article. Just before we tackle that, I wanna take a moment to thank all one hundred and twenty-seven voters who came out to make town meeting happen today. One hundred is our normal minimum for an annual town meeting. Because of COVID, the governor actually said that we could go down to ten percent, which is only ten people. We, we didn't need to do that. We actually had over our one hundred quorum, and I thank you all for coming together, and I thank you all for staying apart. And I just wanna remind you before everybody starts going out, two things. First of all, the ushers will tell you when to go out, just so everybody can stay away from each other. And we are voting next Tuesday. It's at the regular places in the south. It's the Jaffe School in the north. It is the middle school next door to us. However, the polling hours are ten AM until six PM. So they're shortened hours. Is there time left to do a mail-in or absentee? There is still time to request mail-in or absentee ballots, so you can check with the town clerk's office if you're so interested. Also, bring a black pen if you'd like to, if you wanna use your own pen and not share, bring a black pen along with you, and that'll make things faster and safer. Article seventeen, to see if the town-
Mr. Moderator, may I interrupt you for a sec? Before we go on, on behalf of the board, I think it's appropriate, I'd like to thank Mary from our building department, health department, for what she did running around with the microphone today. I think she deserves it, yeah. And I'd like to also say that we appreciate what the entire Sleckman's office and their, all those people that have set up this, this hard auditorium. I think they deserve a lot of credit for keeping us safe, and I thank you to the crowd, again, on behalf of the board, I think, for being so respectful tonight and bearing with the conditions we had to. So thank you to all of you and all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. That's a great point. A lot of town employees came together. A lot of town employees came together, did a lot of planning to make all this happen tonight. Again, it's unprecedented, so I, I think they did a great job for the first time that we ever had to deal with something like this. I also just wanna mention quickly that if anybody doubts it, heat does rise, and Mr. Lamarche and I are hotter than any of you. The podium pals up here. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford zoning bylaw to add Chapter twenty-five, large-scale brown-mounted solar energy systems in the form set forth below, and further to amend Chapters four, five, and six residential, commercial, and industrial zoning districts, to add the language in bold italics as set forth below, for the purpose of adding the term large-scale brown-mounted solar energy systems to the use tables of each chapter or act thereon.
Mr. Manager, I move that Article seventeen be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Who sponsored this?
Planning Board.
Right.
And the chairman, I think, would like to comment.
Sponsored this article? Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board. Recommendation of the Planning Board?
Planning Board recommends, we did a lot of hard work to get this thing done. It's gonna help us in the future dealing with some of these solar systems.
Is your mic on, Richard?
I put it on.
There you go.
And-
Start again with, with the recommendation.
Okay, in April, we had a public hearing. Now they, they volume, I guess. And we did months and months of hard work to get this to the people, so that we could, you know, cross the Ts, dot the Is, and deal with these, this new particular wave of energy generation that's coming to our town. We've tried to be as, we've, we've gone to other towns, we've gone to the CAMRPC, we've, we've tried to get something that will help us as a board, trying to work with these developers that come in there on these projects. So our moratorium has basically expired, and this is to take the place of the moratorium. We hope that you will approve this article. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the Planning Board does recommend, and have spent many hours, and we thank them. Questions or comments on Article seventeen? Gentlemen in the front. Vanna? I mean, Mary?
Gary Watson, Seven Way Nav. Exactly, what are we voting on here? Are we voting to rescind the moratorium? Are we voting to modify the moratorium? Or exactly what does a yes vote entail and what does a no vote entail?
Yeah, so previously, we had a moratorium on this, so your question is, are we stopping the moratorium, or are we putting something in place? Yes?
Yes, we're, we're putting something in place now. The moratorium basically has expired as of typical town meeting time, which would've been the beginning of May. I, I'm sure it defers with the new town meeting now, but it is basically to replace the moratorium and have a firm chapter in our zoning bylaws that we can deal with developers putting in these solar systems.
So in other words, if this moratorium, if this vote passes, the moratorium is ongoing, comply with your bylaws here, could technically come in and put in a solar plant. Am I correct?
Correct. They'll have to meet this new bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the mor, if, if this passes, the moratorium will end. This would take it, this would be the official rules of the town, and-
And if, and if they comply with the bylaws, they could build a solar plant.
Yeah, and then as long as they comply with the bylaws.
Right.
Now, what happens if this vote is a no vote? Then where, where do we stand?
I didn't hear the last part, so.
Oh.
If, if we vote no, majority of the people or whatever in this room vote no tonight, what happens?
Oh, what happens on a no vote? Okay.
Yes, what happens?
I heard you.
Yep. We have to utilize the bylaws as they stand now, which were inadequate. That's why we went ahead and we made a thorough bylaw that deals with this type of facility.
A no vote tonight would mean no solar power plants until we come up with something and vote again, right?
No.
No.
The, the moratorium has basically expired.
So what happens if the moratorium expires with a no vote?
We have to go back to our old regulations. We used the, the previous ones that had, were full of holes and had, we had problems administering.
Yeah. So if this doesn't pass tonight, then there are no new standards, and just like before the moratorium, they could come in and do whatever the bylaw said before. This is to make it more stricter. If, a yes vote would make it more stricter. Okay. Anybody else? Article seventeen? Not seeing any other green cards. So all those in favor of Article seventeen, please raise your green cards. All those opposed to Article seventeen, please raise your green cards. Article seventeen passes. And I do declare a two-thirds vote. So Article two, Article seventeen does pass by a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to dissolve town meeting. All those in favor of dissolving? All those opposed? Nobody's opposed, they're all gonna go cool off. Before you leave, a quick question. We've never done this before. You like the cards better than yelling? Put your, put your cards up if you, just so I can get a, a good idea. Okay? Anybody that didn't like the card idea? Okay. It's easier for me, too, because if one group is louder than the other, you never really know. So I think we're gonna continue this in the past, in the present, and future. The ushers will let you out.
Everybody stays safe.
Thank you so much.